Call the meeting in order, please stand and consult the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone, roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Present.
Alderman Logan?
Present.
Alderman Snow?
Present.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Present.
Alderman Schuneman?
Present.
Alderman Kleckler?
Present.
Alderman Folsom?
Present.
Seven present, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, first item on the agenda is audience request, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council tonight?
Sir, yes.
If so, please come forward Sharon.
Okay, just want to make a little report about the Rock Falls cleanup, very brief, just for your information, we had about 542 participants, 98 percent of them had utility bills, other ones if their landlords were paying utilities, of course they didn't have utility bills. 60 cubic yards of bulk waste, which is two dumpsters, 435 tires, 245 gallons of motor oil, 460 cans of paint, 20,440 pounds of TVs, 600 pounds of other electronics, 35 cubic yards of metals, batteries, aluminum, iron, and refrigerators. First I just want to say briefly, I went by there at 6:30 in the morning and Rod was out there setting things up, I came back at 7:30 and tried to assist him with whatever I could, and they started coming that early, and I think the first one was probably there, I don't know, do you think 7:30 or probably 8:00 maybe, 8:30 that one trailer came with that couple guys, but anyway it just kind of went from there, so needless to say we didn't leave there till 3:00. And at that time we're just gathering up the TVs and trying to get barricades around them because we knew, I mean that little self-help truck was loaded in an hour total, so the rest of the TVs are just on the ground. But anyway, Rod was there Sunday about noon or so, or actually one earlier than that, and trying to get rid of those TVs, we were hauling them over to self-help, and then Monday we finally got him out of there. We had some trailers come in there and were able to get them out, and some volunteers as well. The total cost, $5,110 for the charge from self-help, newspaper ads we paid for is about $230, so total about $5,340 bucks for that. City gave us $1,000, thank you very much for that, very much appreciated. We had some cash donations of $150, Rod donated three months of his altriments fund, yes, 900 bucks we got from him, scrapped about 100 bucks back, so total cost to us about $3,190, which we paid that off today, Kathy paid that to self-help. Just a real successful event, I think, I mean everybody, not everybody, but a lot of help from our association. The weather was great, it just turned out really well, so I guess that's all I have to say, but thank you very much for allowing us to have that rent-free space and the donation, of course, and I guess we're all pretty contented with it, pretty satisfied with what went on.
Well I think for the last meeting, we made reference to the fact of how appreciative we were, and I would just ask now hearing the numbers, any Alderman have anything they'd like to add?
I'd just like to thank everybody that went out and donated their time and to set this up to make it happen, because it's a lot of electronic items, just the TVs alone, you look at the paints, the motor oils, I mean that's all toxic elements, so it's nice to see that disposed of correctly.
Well Rod ended up with all that in his building over there at the shop, I went by there one day and he was out there pouring it all in barrels, he and his wife, so he got to take care of that part of it, which is good, because I didn't have to get involved with that. But yeah, motor oil too, O'Reilly's filled up before we were ready, so he had to take that over to his shop and deal with that as well, but anyway, it all turned out alright, so it was a great event, thanks again to everyone.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Nothing from you Pam? Just want to ask you here every week, so. Community affairs, Bethany, no she's not here, goes without saying they're probably getting ready for this weekend, which we'll address a little later. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I would ask the council if there's any items of the four, of the five, excuse me, that anyone would like to be pulled to handle separately? If not, city clerk if you would please.
Approval of the minutes of the June 7th, 2016 regular council meeting, approval of the bills as presented. Approval of the IDNR lease number 3310 for the Linville Crossing Bridge over the Hennepin-Feter Canal, in consideration of the mutual benefits to be derived from the city and the IDNR, the city is not required to pay a lease fee for the use of the premises. Approval of the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone lots 2 to 5 in final plat of Glenn's Garden subdivision as follows, Lot 2 from M1 to MU1, Lot 3 from B2 to MU1, Lot 4 from B2 to MU1, and Lot 5 from R2 to City MU1. And number 5, approval of the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone city property, recently acquired from the Wayne Schmidt property, currently owned by Wayne Schmidt, 56.39 acres as followed, western portion from County B3 to City B2, and the eastern from County A1 to City A1.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Logan?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Snow, is there any further discussion or questions in the council?
Mr. Reese?
The two who re-sonate?
Yes sir.
For the pay ordinances to be back for the next council meeting.
Alright sir. Frizzle?
Thank you.
Motion's on the floor and been seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you, next item is ordinance for first reading.
Approval of ordinance 2016 2267 appropriation ordinance for the year beginning May 1st 2016 and ending April 30th 2016.
I move for the adoption of 2016 2267.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Logan for the first reading, approval of ordinance 2016 2267, which is our appropriation ordinance for the year beginning May 1st of 2016 and ending April 30th of 2016. Any questions? To be 2017. Yes, that should be 20...
Ending April 30th 2017.
Further discussion? This is a first reading, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is approved. Ordinances for second reading and adoption individually, please.
Adoption of ordinance 2016 2258 amending section 16-387 restrictions on issuance for liquor license and adding section 16-387.1, Basset training required.
Make a motion to adopt 2258?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schuneman, seconded by Mr. Logan for the adoption, second reading of ordinance 2016 2258, and Mr. Snow will accuse himself from this.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Seven aye. Adoption of ordinance 2016 2268 prevailing wage ordinance.
I make a motion for the adoption of ordinance 2016 2268 prevailing wage.
Second a motion.
Motion by Mr. Reitzel, seconded by Mr. Schuneman, second reading and adoption of ordinance 2016 2268 prevailing wage ordinance, questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. City Administrator, Ms. Blacker please.
Yes Your Honor, I'd like to ask that item number one be on the agenda at this time to be revisited until July 5th council meeting.
Without objection, item one will be removed. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
At this time I'd like to have Attorney Reese address the issues for the council.
We had a teleconference call last Friday with attorneys of Chapel, Cracker, and Representative Tom R. W. Baird, and it took a little while to get all everybody together for when we could do that, and that is the reason for why there's no action on the agenda tonight for anything to do with the bond issue or the riverfront period sympathy, because they were not able to get documents prepared in time for that. Now, they assured us that they'll have those documents ready in order to be put onto the agenda for the finance committee meeting this coming up.
Next Tuesday.
28, so they said they'll have it through by next, at least by this Friday, the documents so that they can be discussed at the finance committee, and...
We would like to encourage that all Aldermen attend the finance committee meeting next Tuesday, the 28th, that begins at 5:00 here, Attorney Reese will be here as well to address any legal concerns that have been had in the bill's documents. On to item number two, as in the common tradition that we have, we always do first and second reading of the appropriation ordinance and review the year before's budget at its finality, so that's what we're going to do tonight in front of you, and I believe I've already had it in your packets too, you've got the copy of the year-end budget summary, and normally I don't do one that is quite this detailed, however, as you guys remember, we did on the appropriation ordinance this year because we had expenditures that exceeded our appropriation, and because of the land purchases of the Schmidt-Holmen property and the debt certificate issuance, we had significant revenues over what we expected, so because we are so far off this year from our original budget, I felt that it was important that we address and go through this and see the places that we had not predicted or assumed that we would be spending on. Alright, first we'll go to the general fund. The overall general fund revenues for fiscal year 16 greatly exceeded the budget expectations due to one-time revenues totaling 2.7 million from debt certificate issuance and an inter-fund loan from the electric utility. Those revenues were used to purchase 97 acres of development land along the I-88 exchange along Route 40. The general fund assumption for reoccurring revenue was actually 72,000 less than predicted. The deficit in revenues is most notable in the seek of anticipated grant funds for demolition of the Langston Building. Since the demolition has not occurred yet, the 200,000 in US EPA funds have not been realized. Other funds such as state income tax, or better known as the FDU, state use tax, the code hearing income, liquor license income, building permit income, and video hearing income exceeded all assumptions. And I did break it out because I felt that it was important to show the two charts, one with just the one-time revenue source of the debt issuance and the inter-fund loan, and one without tax. Then in here, and I'm going to go over the pages that are the line-by-line of each department in the, or each revenue line item in the general fund. I did a pie chart that shows the final results, and as always, sales taxes are highest contribution at 29 percent, followed by property tax and then income tax right on at the tail. Right after that, it's always notable to show that our utilities, our water, electric, wastewater, and garbage contribute 13 percent to the general fund. We'll address later on in the year when we're looking at rate studies whether that number should be lower or higher, I think we're probably pretty close to where we should be right now, but that is the breakdown of the revenues and where they come from. Anytime you guys have questions, feel free to interrupt me if you have a question. On the general fund expenditures, the FY16 general fund realized a substantial increase in expected expenditures, however those expenditures were 97 acres of development land purchased by the city. These land purchases are represented in the administrative, administration budget at $559,000 for the purchase of land from George and Jan Holmen in December of 2015, and the April 2016 purchase from Wayne Schmidt and the remainder of the acreage components in the public property budget totaling $1,046,211 dollars and $1,449,41 dollars respectively. Several of the departments came in under budget, however the street, however the street and police departments, which are two of the general fund's largest budgets, finished off the year significantly under budget. The street department enjoyed a mild winter with little overtime and did not purchase two new dump trucks and files as budgeted. Those vehicles have since been ordered and will be reflected in the FY17 expenditures. Also due to the mild winter, the minimum amount of salt was ordered and extra funds were not required for motor fuel tax. There are no other notable unexpected expenditures within the general fund. And I had the breakdown on the next page of each department, and you have what we budgeted versus what was actual on there for FY16. And then I left the FY17 on there so you guys can try and see the running tally over the years. And I did a pie chart to see the expenditures, there's never really any surprise in this, except this year. It's always been, police department has been the biggest expenditure of any department, however this year, because of the land purchases going through the public property budget, so enjoy it this year Chief Nelson, because we only hear that that happens, the police department actually came in second, so followed closely by the street department. Alright, any questions? Alright. Now for the enterprise and utility funds for FY16. The Rock Falls electric utility assumptions for both revenue and expenditures prove true. The revenues were slightly higher than seen and expenditures were 320,000 less. The overall ONM realized a $1 million profit, which is $200,000 higher than budgeted. Any profit from ONM is used for capital improvements to the electric infrastructure. Capital improvements were made for the following line items, system upgrades, substation upgrades, generators, hydroelectric generation facility, various equipment, and escape system. The electric utility's anticipated rate study in FY16 was delayed and will be completed in FY17. Until the rate study has been completed and presented to the city council, no changes have occurred in the electric rate. The hydroelectric generation facility located at the upper dam has operated at record levels and generated over 1 million kilowatt hours multiple months during the past fiscal year. The total hydroelectric generation credit earned by our facility was $825,000 in FY16. Capital cost recovery funds from electric usage contributed $480,000 to the general fund. Wastewater. The FY16 year-end figures reflect no unpredicted outcomes to wastewater's income in any category, ONM capital or debt, however there is $815,000 in one-time revenue received from Willy Kaufman and Associates. Due to an issue at the main lift station and a sanitary sewer collapse on West First Street in June of 2015, there were unexpected expansions, expenses which burdened the ONM budget. Those additional expenses totaled $183,000, including approximately $20,000 dollars of overtime for 24-hour bypass pumping on West 23rd Street. With those additional expenses, the wastewater department realized a $202,000 deficit in operational costs. In addition, to further alleviate the burden on the ONM budget, the operational number of employees has been reduced from five to four, with the fifth employee being transferred to the water department to fill their vacant position. The wastewater department is conducting a rate study during FY17, which may result in changes to the basic rate structure of utilities in future years. Water department. The water department had no unexpected change in revenue in ONM capital or debt, the water revenue has held steady over the past several years and has maintained a modest operational profit. The water department is conducting a rate study in FY17 in conjunction with the wastewater department, which could possibly lead to increased revenues in future years. With the well number seven project not proceeding on the anticipated time schedule in FY16, the capital expenditures were half the amount budgeted, however those expenditures will be realized in FY17. Capital improvements to the water plant and distribution system are continually necessary. Installation of new meters began approximately two years ago and are about one-third installed throughout the city. There are no other notable changes to the water department revenue or expenditures, and financial garbage. Since changing the garbage collection process and entering into a new contract for waste disposal, the garbage fund has seen a drastic change in its financial position. In 2012, the garbage fund was expected to be used to last of its reserves and was showing significant losses each year. To date, the garbage fund has regained a reserve balance exceeding $300,000. There were no other significant variances from the forecasted budget for either revenue or expenditures. And then I listed all the other funds after that, their budgets, including, I included the utility and enterprise funds in all the budgets, so you can see what the final totals were for. And then we come to the very end where we end up with our final figures. Due to expenditures exceeding the budget assumptions, the city filed and amended the appropriation ordinance in FY16 that covered the additional amount. Although we had many unplanned expenditures, the city ended the year strong with a surplus balance of $33,185,57, slightly above the anticipated figure of $5,800. All reserve funds are safely above their required reserve balances, the city's fiscal health is stable, and we are looking forward to the state of Illinois as we not only their FY16 budget, but their FY17 budget, so that we are able to have a clear picture of what, if anything, we may need to adjust in our municipal funding. Alright, we can say goodbye now FY16.
I for one really appreciate the effort, the extra effort that Robin put into the narration, especially on the end of the year, because so many times we pass things and by the end of the year, there are additional expenses and they're not really shown or accounted for, they're accounted for on paper but not in words. Thank you.
Alright, the last thing that I would like to bring up tonight is the approval of a purchase of a laboratory information management system from Porterly Corporation, 1901 South Wright Boulevard, Concord, Illinois, in the amount of $10,948.50.
I move for the approval of the $10,400, $948.50.
Second that. Motion's been made by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Snow, for the approval of purchase of a laboratory information management system, referred to as LEMS, from Porterly Corporation in the amount of $10,948.50. Questions, comments?
What is this?
This is an evidence system.
Further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Seven aye.
I have nothing else Sharon.
Thank you. Next item is information correspondence, Mr. Argini.
I have nothing now Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Reese?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Frickenstein?
I have nothing tonight Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Just a couple of informational items, if you haven't been down there, West First has been paved, the barricades will be removed tomorrow, once they're done we'll run the streets through Brooklyn, will be none of that area for now. Also, any refuse on the city side from the EPA side has been removed, so anything up there now is, I'm not sure belongs to it. Second is, we are going to start up the first of the pumps at the lift station tomorrow. Training's at 1:00 and we will go live with the pump shortly after that. That's all I have, any questions?
Did we do something different on that West First project? If I remember, we were talking about some type of traffic control and bypassing around from First Avenue, that had to be done or something?
No, we found an easier way to do it, they actually set up, they brought in very, very large tanks, and they pumped from the dog pound force main, they pumped directly into those large tanks as needed, and at the end of the day, they just drained it back into the system, and so there was no need for bypass pumping, saved us a lot of money. So I have some answers.
Thank you. Mr. Simon?
Mr. Siri? Mr. Patel?
I noticed you got excommunicated from over here.
Just a quick note, if you've seen on Facebook, we started, the Brodky contractor that was awarded the well installation started today, they broke ground today, which means he has to go till he has the hole developed and the screen and column pipe, so he'll be working 24-hour by tomorrow morning, I'm hoping that he has a screen set and a casing, so this process had to be this one, this way, so they're moving along, had a couple of hiccups, but they were definitely drilling a hole in the ground, so. And the other thing, this month we sent out a survey through the utility bills, I believe the utility office is getting a few questions, if they would pass them off to me, just a quick response is pretty much is what I'm hearing, so, and if we could get the information back from the public, you know, that'd be great, we have to do this every other year via the EPA inspection, so it'll have to be done every other year, okay?
Any questions for Ted? Thank you. Janelle?
Well I'm hoping for the approval of the recommendation from the tourism committee to hire an unpaid intern, experience only, for the tourism... to hire an unpaid intern, experience only, for the tourism department. There's a lot going on. And as much as I would like to be able to be here seven days a week, nine hours a day, I'm having, I feel like I'm not able to dedicate as much time when it comes to adding events to the website. We just have a brand-new website started, and we had an issue with all the pictures, so they dumped them all. So not only am I working on these events, you know, making contacts, you know, trying to do everything I can to bring in tourism to Rock Falls, every single web page on the website, I've had to add photos to. I've had to input data. I had to clean everything up, which is fine, but what bothers me the most is I'm falling behind on adding events to the website. The whole point of Rock Falls tourism, I feel, is to let people know about Rock Falls and the events that are going on. If I could have assistance with input, you know, sales and marketing for events, putting out banners, you know, setting up initial contacts, assisting me with events, soliciting volunteers, I would be able to feel that I am doing everything I can to make sure that Rock Falls tourism and the people of Rock Falls have what they deserve.
Where would this intern come from?
Well, I was given a resume, but she got, she was hired, but I was going to be calling Sauk Valley Community College, go by one of their recommendations.
Okay. And this would be an unpaid position, you said?
Yes.
And how many, what's your plan for number of hours for work and whatnot?
You know, I could, part-time.
Thirty?
Yeah, and I may be able, depending on the intern, you know, how dedicated they are, and, you know, it may be less.
Okay. Mr. Logan, want to make that motion?
Yes.
Mr. Logan, motion, hiring of an unpaid experience-only intern for the tourism department, for hours to be determined by the director? Second?
Second.
Ms. Reitzel. Any further questions for Janelle? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Oh.
Now, there's some events going on this weekend at the lift station.
Yes. We have our destination weekend, three events going on, the Rock Falls Riverfront. New this year, Bass Pro Shops Big Cat Quest inaugural team fishing tourney will be held 24th through the 26th. And returning to the riverfront, we have Summer Splash and River Chase. I mean, Rock Falls Riverfront is going to be the place to be. Bass Pro Shops, a family-oriented event, and is the Midwest qualifier for the 2016 National Championship in Richmond, Virginia. Entry forms can be found online here at the city, at the tourism office, and registration is still open. You can sign up Friday at the Eagles Club in Rock Falls while you meet the pros, watch the seminar, and get a free dinner and tee-shirt for the first hundred entrants. Can't make it out on Friday, you can sign up on Saturday during the event, and for whatever reason you can only make it on Sunday, you can sign up on Sunday. And there is no late registration fee, which is huge. Registration is $200 for a two-person team, $250 for a three-person team. Children 12 and younger fish for free. The fishing area is from Rockton Dam to Rock Island. It's guaranteed $10,000 in cash and prizes. Fishing starts on Saturday at six with weigh-ins from three to four on Saturday and Sunday. We also have drink specials, dining specials, live music along Second Street with the local businesses. You know, visit Rock Falls and enjoy a three-event weekend, and hotel rooms are still available at Super Eight Holiday Inn Express and Suites, and there is a limited amount of rooms, but they're still available, at Country Inn and Suites and at Days Inn. You can go to visitrockfalls.com for more information, and we have a truck to win during Bass Pro Shops Big Cat Quest. I could go into length like I did last time, but check it out, visitrockfalls.com for details and for rules, official rules. On visitrockfalls.com, you can get your downloadable destination deals, and during the weekend, Corner Tap is going to be offering a free coffee and donut, one for coffee, one donut per person. Very good coffee. I went there last week, very good coffee, very good donuts. And free marketing. I'm going to have a booth down at Bass Pro Shops Big Cat Quest, so if you have an event or an attraction in Sauk Valley area and you wish to advertise for free, you can drop your information off at your booth, and you're more than welcome to be there at the booth as well. A little bit of information for Summer Splash, we have the Princess and Superhero Day will run on Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00. Kids can come dressed as their favorite princess or superhero and join the parade at 12:30. There's activities, Fun Fair, Petting Zoo, Photo Booth, and they're all free. Kids' activities will run from 10:00 to 2:00 on Sunday. There will be 60-plus vendors selling arts, crafts, and other items from 11:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. It says both days, but I don't believe, I think that's just Saturday because of the fireworks. Entertainment stage on Saturday, there will be Dog Trick Demonstration, Zumba, Zanchi's Dancers, Woodland Dance Academy, canine demo, and at 2:00, the River Country Stomp Line Dancing, and more. And you can go to visitrockfalls.com for more information. And there's also Dale Earnhardt Jr.'s NASCAR and simulator will be on hand from 11:00 to 6:00. There'll be a cruisin' from 5:00 to 8:30 on Saturday. There'll be prizes and food discounts for participants who will be guided, well, there'll be guided parking, you will have, be given direction. There's Uptown Pub Crawl will be from 5:00 to midnight, and then on Sunday, Harvest Time Babel Church will host a community church service at 10:00 a.m. And then, of course, the traditional Wild Game Cookout from 11:00 to 7:30 each day with alligator brats, buffalo burgers, elk burgers, pork chops, and more on the menu. Go to rockfallschamber.com for more information and a complete schedule. And then the Rock Falls River Chase. River Chase starts on Friday, the 24th. There's a Test and Tune from 3:00 to 6:00. Boat races are on Saturday and Sunday, 10:30 to 4:30, at Seward Riverside Park in Rock Falls. And new this year, the Rock Falls River Chase is a North American championship for junior-class boats. The Optimist Club will be selling burgers, pork chops, and hot dogs. Dairy Mart Plus will have their mobile truck with various food items, and Emmanuel Church Youth Group will be selling drinks. There'll be free programs at the races, and with all the River Chase info and sponsors, plus there will be sweet tee-shirts for sale, River Chase tee-shirts. There's family-friendly activities, there's a bounce house and water inflatables, so parents have your kids in their swimming suits if you want to let them go in those. There's free fire truck rides, are Saturday, 10:30 to 4:30, and on Sunday, 1:00 to 4:30. Each ride is approximately 15 to 20 minutes, and the National Guard 1644th Transportation Group will have two vehicles at the park. Organizer is Terry Hicks. You can contact him on the Rock Falls River Chase Facebook page, or you can go to visitrockfalls.com or Destination Rock Falls Three-Event Weekend. I'm almost done, I promise. Just to let you know, Rock Falls Tourism is proud to announce that Pink Heels Tour will be coming to the Sauk Valley area on Friday, July 29th, and Saturday, July 30th. Pink Heels are a group of first responders that travel the country to raise awareness, spread hope, and bring healing to those with cancer. They'll be spending time in four local communities this year over two days, and they're actually making a special stopover here in Rock Falls. Their tour this year is in the southern United States, but they've had such an overwhelming response and welcoming here in Rock Falls that they are making a special trip, which I think is absolutely wonderful. So come together on Saturday at the riverfront patio with the pink party. The main event will be along the Rock Falls Riverfront from 6:00 to 9:00. The Pink Heels truck will be on display, and events will feature health and wellness boosts for many organizations and nonprofits. And then on 9:00 o'clock or dusk, we'll be having pink fireworks. And we'll also be having pink fireworks for the three event, well, not pink fireworks, we're having fireworks for the three-event weekend, I forgot to mention that. Too much information. We have reserved the patio slab along the Rock Falls Riverfront, so anyone, any type of vendor, people attending this function will want to learn about many programs that our local nonprofits offer, our businesses offer, learn about nutrition and support that is out there for them. They'll be looking for food and drink. Admission is free for both vendors and attendees. Electricity will be $15 a booth if you want it. Vendors are responsible for tables, tents, and signage. Sponsorship is also available. Contact me at visitrockfalls.com. I have my email address on there for more information. And that's what's going on, and if anyone has any questions?
You only need one assistant.
Yeah, I know, and I want an assistant, I don't understand.
Oh, I've got a question. On the Fridays, the June, or the fish tournament thing at the Eagles Club, is this open to the public, or is this just for the people who've registered to fish, to come and meet the pros and have dinner and that type of stuff?
The dinner is just for those that are signed up, but everything else is for the public. The public is more than welcome to attend. And the tee-shirts are for the fishermen.
So in other words, nothing's going on this weekend. Quiet weekend.
I'm not even going to ask these guys any questions, just go to the website.
Just go to the website.
Thank you, Janelle, very much.
Go to the website.
Dan, can you beat that?
Not trying.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for a committee recommendation, and I'm going to defer to Trails Committee Chairman Shuneman.
I'm going to turn this around a little bit here. I'm here to report what the Trails Committee has been up to the last 18 months, and we have a couple of requests for the council, and I want to, it's just going to be a short presentation, but I want to start with how we got to the Trails. And the Trails Committee has been around for a while, and what I inherited as the chairman was, we had to do a lot of digging, and where we start is with this. This is a report that was prepared by the county, and it's the Greenways and Trailways Plan. And this was, this goes back to the 90s, and I'm just going to read from the report here to give you an idea of what, where we started and what this committee is actually doing. But way back in the 90s, Coalition of Towns, Villages, Park Districts, and Other Interested Civic Groups and Individuals chaired by Bud Thompson was formed to create a Whiteside County Regional Greenway and Trails Plan in conjunction with IDNR. The group created this report in 1999 that defined greenways and trails, classified resources, and it included both natural and man-made features. They defined the need to provide a quality land-use relationship with an adequate open space and recreational area. The plan created a vision to serve as an advisory guide for public and private actions regarding greenway preservation and development. It includes information on acquisition strategies, ownership strategies, and public and private financing options. Finally, the plan includes a list, a priority list, reach municipality and region based on the conditions at the time, this was 1999, and includes a group of maps, which is in the back, and the maps are for those regions and municipalities that participated. This was a statewide plan, and not every county participated in the plan. Whiteside County was one. The Coalition concluded that at a periodic review, they recommended every 10 years should be conducted with the individual priority list as a basis for ongoing review process and revised as needed, which is what we have been trying to do. I'm going to, this is going to the tourism department, it's going to stay in there. They've been very good about working with us on the different projects that we've had, and trails and tourism go hand in hand. I mean, it's been something that we're developing, but it is something that we're definitely working on together. Now, the key phrase in the report, as far as we're concerned, was contained in a sentence that starts, "The plan created a vision." Vision, which is what we have been working on, on the Trails Committee as a vision, to serve as an advisory guide. The evolution of a vision, the evolution of a vision represents a guideline for us to follow for future civic projects. The visions of past aldermen and the evolution of their visions are exemplified in three projects here, and I just want, before I get to the Trails, I want to give you an idea of our philosophy. The first vision I'm going to talk about is the creation of the electric department. It was a vision. Now, it evolved from a necessity, a necessity, because we had to address a policy that resulted in overcharging the city for electric use at the time. And I'm not going to pretend to know everything about electric, the electric department, the creation of that. Alderman Kuhlmeier was in on the ground floor, and he can recite chapter and verse. I just want to highlight a few of the, just a few things. First, we have an award-winning department that's nationally recognized for producing safe and reliable power for our citizens. Second thing we accomplished with the electric department is we were a charter member of the I M E A. Alderman Kuhlmeier was part of that. Bob O'Donnell was part of that. And the I M E A is something that we're proud to be members of now, and I know we've done it in the past, but we urge all of the council to go down and see what I M E A is all about. We also constructed a hydro plant, floated a bond for $22 million to build that thing. It was a 10-year bond, we paid it back in eight years. And as you heard tonight, it's producing pretty well for us. And then the last thing I want to highlight is that this vision kept evolving, and now we're in, we have an introduction and expansion of our broadband and fiber that grew out of the electric department. It all took a vision. The second thing I want to talk about for a vision is the wastewater treatment plant, which also evolved from a necessity. And that necessity was we had to address a directive, actually an ultimatum, from the EPA to build a new plant and have it operating in 10 years. That was something we faced. We had to do that, but it took a lot of vision to do that. And let me just, I just want to relate this story, because a little over seven years ago, I took the oath of office and sat in that chair, and the first vote I had cast was to spend $27 million on a new sewer plant. And it was quite dawning, for me it was, and I realized, realized right then and there I had a lot to learn. I didn't know quite as much as I thought I knew. So I went in and I talked to the mayor the next day, and we sat down for a couple hours, and he explained things to me, so I got an education right on my first day on the job here. But that took 10 years. It took years of land and easement acquisitions. It took engineering for the facility, took financing and funding options. We had to get all that in line. And then we got lucky, because we had a shovel-ready project at the right time when money was available, and we were able to save our repairs millions of dollars, millions of dollars. And now we have a state-of-the-art plant, and in addition to that, we also developed a positive relationship with EPA, which has served us in other capacities as well. The last thing I want to talk about as far as vision is the riverfront, and Robin has pictures up here that you can kind of follow along with. This has been something that's gone on for a long time. It goes back to 2002 when Rock Falls Community Development was created, and it was formed and facilitated, served... And it was formed and facilitated, it was formed and facilitated a survey to ask the community what the residents thought the area needed. The overwhelming response in 2002 was the residents wanted the industrial buildings removed and access to the river restored. That was in 2002. They also wanted a strategic plan prepared for redevelopment, focusing on creating a niche to draw young people back to the community. That was in 2002. In 2003, they hosted a trip to Peoria Riverfront. They took fifty local businessmen with them, leaders, residents, and they hired a consultant. 2004, our CDC hosted thirty-one community events and took input on those thirty-one sessions from our local folks. And then through those sessions, they provided content for the redevelopment plan. That's how we came up with the plan. And then, I'm going to get a little fuzzy here, but the fire happened all of a sudden. And we were faced with another problem. And that's between 2005 and 2008. And then we inherited it. I think we're getting up to the point where I remember this stuff. So in 2000, in that three-year span, they hired Van De Wally and Associates to redefine that development plan. We had burned out buildings. We had to do something. We had a mess. We had to clean it up. Luckily, we had a partner. We had the EPA, something we developed with the building of our wastewater treatment plant. They were very helpful. And then 2009, the council appointed an ad hoc riverfront revitalization committee. That committee sent out requests for a master plan consultant. They interviewed a number of people. They had four finalists, and they ended up selecting Shriver and Associates, which brings us to the map I believe we have now. Closer. Closer to the map. We had several maps going on. Then we entered into a contract with Shriver and Wendler to apply for some grants, which we got, a few grants. They kept holding public information hearings. That's part of this whole process. The public was always involved in what was going on here. So the master plan was completed, and it was approved by the city in 2009. They held a luncheon to present it to the city, our CDC did. They held an open house for the purpose of answering questions regarding the plan. And then they held a contest to name the district, and over twenty thousand votes from our residents were cast, twenty thousand to name the district. We got the RBNW out of it. Riverside, River Walk and, River Bike and Walk. I'll bet. Yes. Okay. In 2010, the council, via resolution, wrote for an ITAP grant. ITAP, just so the new folks know, ITAP, I looked this up, Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. It is a program, I believe it's a federal program, isn't it?
It's federal dollars.
Federal dollars administered by the state. But it's one that enhances with trails, bike trails, walk trails. It allows for historical improvements. But anyway, the council went ahead and with a resolution, applied for that grant. The grant was awarded in 2011. We still wanted more input, so the mayor at that time appointed another committee. And we all know, I think after that, that we had several projects come our way. We had the VA hospital come our way. We had the one-stop shopping come our way, and we were trying to fill buildings at the time. And I know that was really a time that was pretty tumultuous around here. We had some knock-down dragouts in the council, in our Public Works Committee meetings. And Mark would come to us one time and tell us, well, we're moving ahead. And then the next time we had a meeting, we found out we had a hidden tube full of mysterious stuff. We didn't know what it was. And so that was, it took a while, but finally we got it all down. And the master plan continued to evolve, and we got ordinances and a new master plan that included the bike path. And anyway, the last picture is the one that Robin likes to put on everything now, which is the vision. This is the process, and then we finally get to the vision, which is, I need a break here. The one, the Google Map one, that one. So there is a vision. Now, onto the trails. Unlike the other examples, the creation of a vision for our trails is not evolved out of a necessity. Rather, it's been an exercise in imagination and creativity. I've asked the Trails Committee, we've met for the last eighteen months, and they give up their lunch hours. We come in and throw ideas out. Took us a while to get started. Once we got our feet under us, we're moving ahead ninety miles an hour. I want to just note who those members are. New members, council members of Brian Snow, Lee Folsom from the RDA, James Marks, Tammy Marks, Eric Ardenius also contributed. From the IDNR, Dave Hahn, who is now retired, was a great help, great friend. George Bellevick's a landscape architect, who is the father of the charrette. George is invaluable. From the Park District, Mike Sturba also, doesn't say a lot, Mike does, but when he does, people listen. He has good things to say. John Larson, local independent businessman. He's also a scout leader, very instrumental in what we've been doing. Brian Tribbley, how can we say enough about Brian Tribbley, Firehouse Ministries? He's our volunteer coordinator. We have done a lot of things through volunteers, and Brian has been the one to coordinate all that. We have Tim Keller, who's a prairie expert. He's our Peace Corps volunteer, and he'll throw a monkey wrench into things when he can. From the city, Larry Spanka. Larry grew up on the canal, drove motorbikes down the canal, and it's still illegal to do that, but he was doing that way back when. Mark Searing, Mary Nelson from the Extension Service, Chief Nelson, Assistant Chief Bill Milby is not here tonight, Robin, and of course, the mayor. We get going ninety miles an hour, and they kind of hold us back. They put the reins on us and say, wait, there's some things we've got to consider. So it's been a good mix. Okay. Now, the map that is right there, that is from the county as well, and that contains the three trails that we had. When we, from 1999, the items that we listed were from the upper dam to the lower dam, from the lower dam to Lawrence Park, and then signage were our initial contributions to this greenways plan. I want to start with the canal. The canal, of course, is along the blue line there. It's the only established canal we had. Now, Glenn tells me, 1983, when he was the mayor, he established the first trail committee. They dealt with something a little different from what we're doing now, but that's as far back as trails go. We've been thinking about these trails for a long time. With the canal, though, it's the first established trail. It's the only established trail that we had. And it's been kind of overlooked until recently, but Mayor Blanton came to me and said, hey, what do you think about annexing the canal? And I said, sure. I was a little skeptical. But we took a ride over to Kelowna. We saw what the city of Kelowna had done with the canal over there, and they've been working on it for a long time, since the seventies. They have a park-like canal down there. They have pavilions, they have a ball dam, and they have roads. They have, they've taken the sides down. So they've done a lot, and it kind of opened my eyes. So we came back, and we said, well, what we need to do is take a survey and see what people think about this before we annex it. So we took a survey. Tourism helped out with that survey. We sent it out through all of the utility bills, and we were expecting, we were expecting a negative return when we got them back. And of course, I mean, you'll get back, you know, fix the roads first, you'll get back a few of those things. But by and large, the response was very positive. It was determined that most folks who responded think that the canal is an asset and one that ought to be developed. So we went from there, and now we're looking at the annexation of that two miles to Route Forty and the lease, and it goes slow with the state. You know it goes slow with the state. There's no getting around it. I believe we have a lease back now, don't we, Bill?
I'm not aware of any. It may be sitting on a guest somewhere down there, but...
Might be. Anyway, it's going to take a while. Tourism. Before Janelle came on board, the last tourism director wanted to, worked with IDNR to put a canoe launch down by where the first lock is. We've had volunteer groups step up and adopt the canal. That's a program our RDA has. And had a couple of them step up. We had the Hennepin Hundred dropped in our lap, which I think that was your first project, wasn't it? Like, two weeks on the job, and we're two weeks away from a major race event, and she jumped in and took that over, too. We ran into some really good speakers. Steve Bucktill is one. Steve is the Hennepin Hundred. He's the creator of that, one of the creators of that. He's with the 501(c)(3) Illinois Trails Organization, and they're very active. He was a great speaker. We talked about things, ways to preserve the canal. We've discussed a conservancy group, and all in all, right now, we haven't done a whole lot on the canal, other than what you can see Brian's group has done with paint, and he's repaired some of the trail. Next would be the riverfront. As I said, that trail extends from the upper dam where there is now the walk bridge, which in 1983, the walk bridge wasn't there. However, Sterling, on their plan, shows the upper dam as part of the trail system as well. I think I heard somebody refer to this trail as a trail to nowhere. Believe me, this is not a trail to nowhere. This is a trail, once it's developed, that will end up at the canal. The riverfront is actually going to be the hub of our trail system. That's where the railroad trail will come in, the riverfront trail will expand from there, and they'll all hook up together in a big triangle there. It's kind of hard to see on that little map, but if you wanted to look at, that's where it will do. Now, once that trail hooks up with the upper dam and you can cross into Sterling, Sterling has plans to take their trail out to Sauk Valley. Dixon has plans to bring their trail down to Sauk Valley. It would be nice if we could loop that all the way around Dixon, bring it back. We'd have a nice thirty, forty-mile bike path. You know, these are the kinds of things that we deal with on that Trails Committee. We'd throw everything against the wall. It's fun committee to be on, believe me. You all wish you could be on a committee like that. I mean, we go a hundred miles an hour. Okay. Now, the trail that we're here tonight with the master plan, you have in your packets one of these. This is a brochure we developed for the public after the charrette. The Trails Committee at this time, this is already passe. We're working on another one. But this is for public consumption. What this does contain, though, and you have it in your packets, too, is a copy of our mission and vision statement. That was one thing that John insisted on. And I think, really, any committee that wants to create a mission and vision statement, I think it would help you. This brochure, this brochure on the inside, it does show you the proposed trails and et cetera. I want to, first, before I get into what all is on here, I want to talk about the prairies. And our prairie guru is Mr. Searing. And Mark began this with this trail, the railroad trail, with prairie. That's how this thing started up there. And he, we put the prairies out for a reason. We put the prairies out to save us money, but they're really turning into an asset. There are some very good things happening with that. We've got, Commonwealth Edison came in, cut down everything, all the trees that were growing. And we planted prairie last year in that area where they cut that prairie down. The Storybook Trail, which you've all heard about, is now part of this trail. This is something that was all done with volunteers, too, by the way. The Storybook Trail was put up by the Boy Scouts. They made everything. Rod's helped out with the Storybook. He's created some covers for the Storybook, actually, so that they keep them dry. I mean, once you get involved with this, it's really hard to go away from it. It's really hard to detach yourself from it. I'm very happy that we have someone on board now. Brian, I'm glad that you've discovered the canal. I really am happy.
Well, I discovered a new part of the canal, the lower level, the water. It's a great place.
Well, the upper trail's the same way. And we have, not only do we have the prairies out along the railroad, we have a sewer treatment plant now, too, and they're a pristine prairie out there, Ed will tell you. We have wildlife, we have, it's just amazing on the prairies. But I wanted to give Mark recognition for that. His work has been just, it's all, he loves it. So he and Tim Keller, they make a pair. So here is the master plan. This is from the charrette. Most of these come from the charrette. There are a number of, a couple of parking lots, there's areas for pavilions, walkways, lights, cameras. We just included everything in this trail. And then this is approximately two and a half miles, approximately two and a half miles from McNeil Road into the hub, which is the riverfront. And this is what we're presenting tonight, the master plan. And in order for this process to continue, so we can write grants, get funding, we need to approve this master plan. And I'm asking the council at this time to approve this and submit this updated plan to the county. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
One thing that I think is important to add to this is on the ma-
One thing that I think that is important to add to this is on the master plan, there's a lot of things listed on there. That doesn't mean that all those things are going to happen, but it doesn't limit us to, those were all things that the public put in that they would like to see along the trail. So we just decided to include them all and then, you know, wish big and hope for at least something modest. So that doesn't mean all those things are going to end up in the final product.
But if you're going to dream, dream big.
Yeah.
That's the philosophy.
And I'll make the motion to adopt the master plan for the canal, because it sure took a long ways getting here.
Master plan for the trails?
For the trails, rather.
Okay.
I said the canal, but I meant for the trails.
Forward and into Whiteside County?
Yeah, and I was on the Greenway and Trails Committee for Whiteside County too, but getting an updated version is really important to our community because they also have to submit to the state their maps.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, second by Mr. Snow, to approve the recommendation, to approve the Rock Falls master plan for trails and its submittal to Whiteside County. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have one more thing, Your Honor, and that is, I just want to make it clear that these projects aren't realized without a cost. Annexation comes with cost. Grants don't cover a hundred percent of a project. There's shared costs, there's maintenance costs, engineering costs, and so on. In a recent article in Forbes Magazine, leadership coach Roger Dean Duncan points out that everyone everywhere is being challenged to do more with less and that this will be the ongoing mantra into the future. Good news, he says, is that the do more with less challenge presents a golden opportunity for smart proactive people. It simply requires strategic ordering of priorities. I maintain that this has been our challenge for decades. The leaders of this community have accepted that challenge. Not only were they smart in their approach, but they have also demonstrated an ability to both be strategical and proactive in ordering priorities that do more with less. This is the same approach we will need in following, to follow the faces, following, facing the challenges of developing this trail system. Be that as it may, I'm disturbed by the air of hostility that has presented itself recently towards civic projects. As chairman of the Trails Committee, I would be remiss in not pointing this out. It would be a travesty and an insult to all of the good people of our community who have contributed to this plan to have their efforts thwarted, either through ignorance of the process or by simple grandstanding. Therefore, I would ask this council to put forth a motion to draft a resolution that recognizes and accepts the mission and vision statements put forth by this committee as city policy and pledges to support the objectives set out in this plan.
I'll make a motion to approve that statement of mission statement.
As is included in the pack, Mr. Shuneman?
I'm sorry?
Mission and vision, as is included in the pack.
Correct.
Motion by, excuse me, Mr. Snow, second.
Do I need to read it, Your Honor?
We have a motion and it's been seconded. If you'd like to read it now.
The mission of the City of Rock Falls Hennepin Canal Trails Committee is to work towards the establishment of a multi-use public recreational trail system that serves and connects the community with other regional trails. The vision, the City of Rock Falls Trail System will be a unique public asset, offering a safe place for members of the community and visitors to freely enjoy nature, bike, exercise, or simply enjoy the environment and experience local history and the connection to the Hennepin Canal Parkway and the Rock River National Water Trails. That is our vision.
Okay. Motion's under form, but seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. Ward reports. Mr. Reitzel?
I wasn't going to have any tonight, sir, until I was looking at these pictures. You know, sometimes we get to looking ahead and so much, we forget what's behind us. I just think back about the night with the fire and all those laps and those holes and the ground, but I don't know how exactly ever we got a road across there. You look at it now and you then realize we've come a long ways. We've done Rock Falls very well. That's all, sir.
Mr. Logan?
Nothing to do, Your Honor.
Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Yes, as Jim was speaking, George Belvix has been a big help over the years and there were times when George and I disagreed on trails throughout the six northern, northwestern counties. However, before George Belvix, back in the eighties, Jim Burley was the landscape architect and he helped us with the lower dam plan and the anchor for the Riverside Trail. At that time, of course, we had the factories that were still in existence, the RB&amp;W and so forth. So it took a lot of study and eventually the park district did find that they had the riparian right of way along the river from RB&amp;W all the way up through Seward Park. So that was one thing. The others, I'd like to say congratulations to sixteen forty-fourth National Guard for their reunion for twenty-five years from the time of their deployment. And that'll be this weekend also, so have fun. We got a lot to do.
Brian?
Nothing to do, Your Honor.
Thank you. Hope you feel better. Mr. Shuneman?
I was remiss last meeting, I mentioned the Sterling Girls softball team, I forgot to mention the Rock Falls Girls softball team and the Rock Falls Boys baseball team who had excellent seasons and I just, I should be shot for not recognizing them. I apologize to them.
On behalf of the citizens of the third ward, we'd all like to invite you over for the going colonists weekend. So if you don't have anything going on in your ward, come on over to the third ward. That's where it's at.
Mr. Folsom isn't here, so it all falls on you, Mr. Ebenezer.
Nothing to do.
There you go. Under the mayor's report, got several things, just real quickly. I placed on your desk when, before you came in, a copy of my brief on the APPA conference that I attended with Mr. Simon, who failed to mention it at all. Phoenix, just always remember, if you go to Phoenix, it's dry heat. It's dry. Next thing to mention is that, put on your calendars, we're going to have a committee of the whole meeting in July and it's going to be, instead of on the fourth Monday, it's going to be on the third Monday, which will be July eighteen. And the purpose of that call meeting will be a presentation by the USF Group, which is the group doing the rate study for the electric utilities. We've asked them to come up here to present that to you guys so that you have an opportunity to ask questions and whatnot and we will get some paperwork to you probably before so you can look at, which will probably be confusing, but you'll have a chance to look at it and you can ask questions and stuff. So that will be at six o'clock on the evening of July eighteen. Thirdly, a reminder, I sent emails out to you about the Retail 101. This is part of our retail attractions contract that we have. The Retail 101 is a program that they do for municipalities that they're helping. Adam Chandler from that group is going to be out touring our city on Wednesday, June thirtieth, and we're going to meet with him and I've sent out invitations to you guys and other members of the community. I think we're going to have about thirty-five people there. That meeting, I'm very sorry for yous that weren't there, but it's the only time it can be done. It will be from eight AM to twelve noon on Thursday, June thirtieth, and it's going to be out at the Harvest Time Baptist Church on Dixon Avenue, just because all of the other facilities are taken that day. So I hope that you can make that. We've invited banks, we've invited some lending institutions, we've invited realtors and other people in the community, property owners to come to that and our new economic development for the county and our new small business member out at Sauk Valley Community College. A reminder to the citizens out there, I posted on Facebook today, once again, tomorrow night at six o'clock in these council chambers is the one hundred and fiftieth sesquicentennial Planning Committee. This will be every Wednesday night, the fourth Wednesday, at six o'clock in here and I know that, as it always is, something else has come up for tomorrow night already with the hotel grand opening, but we're still going to have this here. It's just balancing where we go and how much we do. Weekend activities, I can't top Janelle, but other than to say, I don't know how many times people say, there's never anything going on in this town. And to my friend that wrote the email, the letter to the editor about, it's a dead town, there's never any activities for anybody to do, I sure as heck hope he gets out and enjoys this weekend. Next thing is something that has just came up this afternoon, that I want to make you aware of in the ongoing state of Illinois issues and what's going to happen. Today, this is courtesy of Willett Hoffman and ironically, we were having lunch and talked about it and then IDOT sent out their informational thing. Today, IDOT Secretary Randy Blackenhorn briefed the industry representatives on the impact of no FY 2017 budget for IDOT projects. He indicated that this is a crisis position for IDOT and that all work we perform for them. First, every firm doing business with IDOT will be notified as early as tomorrow regarding a possible shutdown at the COB, which, correct me, that's the state offices that controls everything to do with?
Well, I think that they know that the COB was closing the business.
Closing the business. Thursday, June thirtieth, without a budget for 2017, all IDOT contracts, engineering, various construction projects will be suspended as of June thirtieth. And this will result in over twenty-five thousand construction workers being laid off in the state of Illinois. All destructive work will be stopped immediately. I'm assuming that's construction in progress. For contractors and local governments, all local let projects funded with MFT funds are not impacted by this suspension. However, local agencies will receive their June MFT distribution in early to mid-July and future MFT distributions will not be made until IDOT budget is implemented or passed. Each local agency will need to determine if projects need to proceed based on their MFT funding availability. Local state federal funded projects may be allowed to proceed, however, local agencies will not be reimbursed by IDOT for work performed until a state budget is implemented. In other words, the contractors and stuff want to continue working for nothing, they can and that isn't going to happen. Contractors will be responsible for maintenance of work zones, erosion and sediment control. Contractors will eventually be compensated for their effort. In addition, contractors will be reimbursed for all costs associated with the shutdown, including removal and replacement of all equipment after a budget is passed. Completion date, work dates will need reviewed, project by project, and projects on the June letting will be awarded after the budget is implemented only. So any projects that are out there bid out right now are not going to be let until after the budget is done. However, if this occurs, after the forty-five day award period, the contractor reserves the right to reject the award for the letting and so on. And it talks about many other things, but one of note here is that, which will probably help hasten something. In the meantime, consider taking your staff and colleagues to call legislators to inform them the devastating impact this will have on your firm as well as your municipality as well as jeopardizing the safety of the roads within construction zones and the potential for crippling delays in our interstate system that may occur, especially entering the city of Chicago and the Stevenson, where projects underway now will close four lanes down to So, how much of that happens, who knows, but I think it's the shot across the bow of things to come. Thing that affects us is the MFT money. Again, we went through this once, they stopped it and then they got it back to us, but I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that, we'll keep you guys informed and I will be making the proverbial calls and sending some letters to Springfield on behalf, so I would assume that all of you would agree that we need to...
Are you ready to get more fuel allotment through June?
The June payment, which would come in July, but they'll do it mid-July and then if there's no budget, they're saying that, that's it till there is a budget. And you know, Sid didn't say that we would be reimbursed for all the months that...
Right. And we did probably expect the same as what we had in the beginning of last year also, but the stop gas measures that were approved, set funding on, was probably only good for last year.
It was.
So everything that we didn't get in, just the same as at this time last year, we can expect not to get until they may, they may put the short term...
Right. They only mentioned MFT, but this is IDOT, so they're mentioning MFT. Who knows if we will go through the same thing?
Right. I would expect that on everything.
I know that the lottery is supposed to be coming to a stop. They're going to stop printing tickets, they're actually going to stop payouts, which they have done already to a degree, so it's going to be an interesting time in the state of Illinois. That's all the remaining things that I have. We need to go into executive session and I would entertain a motion for that. Personnel two C two versus two C one is printed. Employee hiring, firing, compensation, discipline or performance. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Snow, second by Mr. Logan. Going to executive session, roll call. Sir?
It's two C two for collective bargaining, the two C one was for, what was permanent?
Make sure that the motion and the second, that it is for collective bargaining.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Please.
Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?